Okay, we are going to start the Malibu Planning Commission regularly scheduled meeting for Monday, February 5th, 2018. Can we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Mazza.
Here.
Commissioner Uring.
Here.
Vice Chair Marx.
Here.
Chair Pearson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. Richard, since you're running this meeting, would you mind leading us? Thank you, Richard. Approval of the agenda.
I move the agenda as staff recommends with the continuance of item 5B to February 20th, 2018.
A second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? It's unanimous. Can we have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on January 25th, 2018.
Thank you, Kathleen. Much appreciated. Written in oral communications to the public on anything not on the agenda. Looks like we have one. Okay, Jackie Sutton, are you here, Jackie?
Yes.
Okay. You have three minutes. Yes, come up to the podium.
I was telling you, it's the first time I've ever been here.
It's okay. Relax and have fun.
Finally have a problem. No, I'm sorry. Jackie Sutton and I've lived at Big Rock Beach for 60 years. I was married four years before that. And just the other day, I had a motorcycle guy killed in my doorstep. And if we can't do something about those motorcycles, I don't know. The children wait there to get on the school bus. And my mailman, he was a sub, he was delivering the mail, and there's a curve, so you have to know that. Two motorcyclists going by, the other one was injured, the one was killed. And I said, I've just got to speak up on this. The motorcycles are killing themselves, plus us, if those kids are waiting out there to go to school, we'd have to change all of that. Why should we have to do that to let some guy speed down that highway with no mufflers? And it's our kitchen, I can't even cook breakfast in there till everybody's gone off that highway. It's getting worse and worse. And I'm wondering, can we do something about it at all? You know, I can't take the noise anymore. It's just very, very heavy. They don't have, I think my husband said something about mufflers. He refused to come because he said, I don't want everybody to think I'm always complaining. But I said, you never complain. That's our problem. We don't, you know? We let those motorcycles go past there. You can't go to sleep anymore. It's really, really serious. I'd invite one of you or two, three to come to my house sometime, anytime, day or night. And the noise is just unbelievable. And that's all I'm asking. Can we do something or not? You know what? Can they do that and have no mufflers and speed that way? And, I mean, all the stuff that's going on. I never see a policeman do anything. But I don't want to say anything about the cops. My husband said I had a promise of not defaming the police, so I'm not going to. But something's got to, what can we do? I'm just throwing that out to you, and you know, you're the guys that have to figure out something. But it's disastrous now having, you know, people in front of my house, I walk out the door and the guy's dead on his motorcycle. So it was, you know, quite horrifying. So I thought, I've got to come and say something. But I don't know what we can do about it besides, you know, I finally saw some police now that come by our house. Because we're at the Big Rock Signal. And I think they're seeing people, you know, just running through that because the people up on top have to come down. But they told me they hear that noise up there really bad. I never even thought about that, just thinking about myself down below. But I just thought, I have to bring that up. We have to talk to somebody about it because, you know, and see, they come over and they can come between our car and the parkway. And they shouldn't be able to do that. Nobody else is allowed to do it.
Thank you, Jackie. We can address it back when we get our chance to talk.
Fine, thank you.
So thank you very much. I appreciate you coming down. I really do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? Was there any in the public? No? Okay, comments from commissioners? Jeff?
I just tell Jackie we share her frustration. This, of all the bodies that could do something about it, this is the least likely because we don't have any authority over it. But I'll tell you that the city has tried for many years to address this issue, both the speed and the noise. And it's really an issue for the state of California. It's a state highway. It's Caltrans has it. I think that the best thing that you can do is to ask the city council, to ask the Highway Patrol and the sheriffs to increase patrols along that area. But it's a problem for the entire length of Malibu. I mean, you don't have to come down to your area. It's up in, it's on the entire stretch of PCH. But this body doesn't really have any ability to do anything about it one way or another. Sorry.
Jeff, would the Public Safety Commission be a place for her to go?
It might certainly well be, yeah.
There's a Public Safety Commission meeting, I believe it's this Wednesday. And it may be, you know, it may be worthwhile just presenting your case to them and see if they've got anything they could come up with to help you out. I mean, you get it every, I mean, I'm weak, I live over in the Knowles. So I hear them on Sunday all day long. But you could say it happens every day?
Cars and coffee on the weekend is a killer for us.
Okay.
Killer because they've got those guys running by. And so I don't know, the highway, we have to do something.
Try the Public Safety Commission, see if they, they-
Okay, thank you. I won't do that.
I know this came up before the city council several years ago, and the answer was, and we can ask Riva to comment if she wants to, but the answer was, we can't do anything about it. But I have a house in Laguna Beach, and they had a problem. And there are no motorcycles that go down Coast Highway in Laguna Beach anymore. None, ever. Because they told their police, stop it. They have decibel meters, they pull them over automatically and give them tickets. And there are none. You can stand there all weekend. You won't see motorcycles go down that street. So a lot of it has to do with a will to do something about it. We have sheriffs, they have their own little rules. Laguna Beach has their own police department, and they have their rules. But there is a way to stop it. Now, if something like Cars for Coffee is a problem with the local residents, then city council should know about that. Because we sponsor Car for Coffee. The city does. And if the residents are being bothered by it, that's a decision by the city council. But it's not, it's not an insurmountable problem.
I was just going to point out, Jackie, that, yeah, that meeting is, as Steve called out, Wednesday. It starts at 5:00. So you come on in and you can speak to that group. So, thanks.
Okay, and yeah, I sympathize with you, Jackie. It's been an issue in Malibu since I can remember, and I've been here my whole life. So, a long time, way too long. Let's not mention how long. So, yeah, it is an issue. Totally agree, and thank you for bringing it up. I want to say that, I wanted to point out that when the letter went out about the change at the planning department, I got a number of communications. Some people wondering what was going on, some people a little freaked out. But other people actually really happy. And the reason was, they now had a letter they could hand their client and go, see, it's not my fault. So I wanted to bring that up as something you might let people know that, listen, now this, you know, you have a weapon showing what's going on. You have something to show people. And I heard that a number of times, which was kind of surprised me. So definitely a lot of, a lot of, some confusion despite, I think, just fear at seeing that. And I just tried to tell people what it said in the letter, which I read when they read, that if it's not working, it'll be adjusted and fixed. That's what the letter says. So anyhow, just wanted to comment on that. For everyone down here tonight, I'd like to, just like to say thank you for coming down. I really appreciate it. It really does make a difference, and it is noticeable. We up here are charged with making our findings on each individual item based on the code. And if the code is being followed. So that's our task here. It doesn't matter who's the nicest person here, who's lived in Malibu the longest, who's an international drug runner. We've heard it all up here. We're not supposed to decide on issues based on character, just so you know. So that would make it seem like maybe coming down here makes no difference. But that's not true. We have all also, we are also charged with getting public input here tonight. So what you say is on the public record and part of what we use to decide on each item. So you coming down here makes a big difference. When nobody comes down, sometimes it's easy to make assumptions. When people come down, you learn things quite often that you just didn't know. So I want to say thank you for coming down. You may or may not like the decision we make on your particular item, and that's understandable. So if we make a decision you don't like, you can appeal to the city council within 10 days, just to let you know. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Richard.
Thank you very much. We do have some city comments. Our city manager would like to speak this evening.
Perfect. Thank you. Hi, Riva. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. I want to start off by answering Mrs. Sutton's questions, and I will ask the sheriff department to increase their patrols in that area and find out what's happening there. I hadn't gotten any other complaints, but I will certainly follow up with that. With that being said, Bonnie took the day off, and so I'm here to give a report. I wanted to address the chair's comments about the letter that went out on the planning counter hours. We did reduce the hours, so the questions will be taken from 7:30 to 12:30, Monday through Friday. This isn't set in stone. We're going to give it a try and see if it makes our staff more efficient. Applicants can still make an appointment for an afternoon appointment if they're unable to come in in the morning. And we're also going to let applicants have a pre-designed meeting with a senior planner to go over the details of what they are submitting to make sure they have everything lined up. One of the other things we'll be doing is requiring that all submittals come in complete. We've had a problem in the past with submittals coming in incomplete, which delays the processing time. So we're hoping by requiring applicants to come in and make their application complete when they submit it will smooth the process along. So these are all things that staff is trying to implement to make things work better. If we find out it's not working well, then we can certainly adjust it accordingly. I also wanted to give an update to the commission on the staffing in the planning department. As you know, we've had a few vacancies and we've been recruiting. And I have some good news. We have an associate planner that will be starting on March 5th. I have two assistant planners that will be starting on February 26th. And a planning technician that will also start on February 26th. And I have another offer out to a third assistant planner and hope to hear back tomorrow. So within a matter of a couple of weeks, I will have four new staff people, possibly five. Additionally, on February 26th, we'll be bringing in item to the city council to approve two different contracts with planning consulting firms. And we'll have two very senior-level experienced consultants available two days each to the city to assist with the legislative issues that have been pending in the planning department's list of things to do. So, thanks, Norm. So I'm very aware of the workload that we have in the planning department, something I'm very committed to solving the backlog and getting things forward. And not only just applications, but the high priority legislative items that the council and the commission has asked us to work on. So that is what we are doing. And while I'm up here, I'm going to make a plug for the city's test of our reverse 911 system. That's happening this Wednesday, February 7th at 7:00. And we're going to be testing, it's called our Everbridge system. It is the city's 911, reverse 911 system. And what I want people to just be aware of, if they don't get a call exactly at 7:00, that doesn't mean the system isn't working. We're testing the entire database, which is 16,000 numbers. And due to the infrastructure of telephone lines and the way the system works, we can't send them all out immediately at one time. So it has to come in a rolling approach. So if you get a call at 7:10, it doesn't mean that you didn't get the call properly. It's just how it rolled out. So testing that, and hopefully, everybody has signed up. And if you haven't, please make sure you're registered. So happy to answer any questions if the commission has anything.
I have a question. It's, first of all, fantastic on the hiring. Well done.
Thank you.
Very excited by that. I would venture a guess, and then you'll tell me the reality, that bringing all these people is going to be great, but it'll probably also have a short-term slowdown as they get trained because you have to pull people like, I assume, Richard and that to help them out. Or how's that going to work?
Richard says he doesn't need to sleep, so I think I'm fine. No. I do think there may be a short-term slowdown, but we're hoping that by training multiple people at one time, that'll eliminate that as opposed to bringing someone on this month and training them, and then two months later, bringing somebody else on. So the city attorney's office and my office are all committed to bringing people up to speed as fast as possible. And we're just going to throw as much as we can at it and see what sticks.
That's excellent. And I would assume that the reverse 911 test is me somewhat like what happened in Hawaii. Is that true?
Mikey.
I just, I'm baiting you for a comment on that, that's all. Because I heard someone say it. I go, oh my gosh, is it, people are going to freak out.
No, you're going to receive a voice message with my voice on it that will identify, I will say this is Riva Feldman, the city manager from the city of Malibu. We're conducting a test. This is only a test. You know, we're going to say that many times. I haven't seen the script. But it will be very clear that this is a test, that there's no reason to be alarmed. But one of the things that the public safety staff is looking at are issues that other communities had with their reverse 911 systems during emergencies. And I want to make sure we've gotten the kinks out of our system when there isn't an emergency, so.
More questions? John?
Years ago, we had a planning review that was 250 bucks. You could come in and they look at your, your, what you're planning on and say whether you were close or not. This is basically the same thing. Is it free?
I believe so. I'll look to the planning staff for that. I don't know the answer.
Commissioner Mazza, I believe what you're referring to was a pre-application. It was $250, I think, for the first three questions, and then beyond that, we did charge. The plan would be that we would charge an hour of staff time for this. And in that hour that we're charging, the thoughts that we had were that it would be a 30-minute meeting with the applicant to go over questions that they have. But then also a half an hour would be taken in so that the planner, before they step into the meeting, has the opportunity to do some research on the property to see what applications have previously been either applied for or approved. And then also, just if it looks like it's the side of a hill, it takes some time to meet with the city geologist to get, you know, ask if there is a landslide there, or perhaps what are the difficulties. But the idea is, yes, it's a verbal pre-application meeting. And some of the folks that I've spoken to at the counter have requested this because it's a way for immediate feedback and a bit easier than trying to craft those questions up. And that's where they're running into issues.
It's just a couple hundred bucks, something like that.
Our hourly fee, I want to say, is 155, 159, somewhere in there.
And then, Riva, we haven't had a planning manager since, I can't remember his name, left, what?
Kristaloo.
Kristaloo left. Are you planning and replacing the planning manager?
We don't have a recruitment going for that right now. We do still have an open senior planner recruitment that closes on February 23rd. And what, we haven't had great success in finding that. So I took an opposite approach and decided to fill a lot of junior-level positions and see if I can grow some people up into the department. But ultimately, yes, I would like to have a planning manager position.
These two contract employees, are they going to be like the contract planners we have now that are like only there early in the week? And are they going to be doing projects?
We're still working out what their exact assignments will be. But my initial plan, what Bonnie and I have discussed, is that they would actually take over some of the more legislative issues and items as opposed to specific projects because I think it's a little difficult when they're only able to give us one or two days a week. You're welcome.
And, oh, go ahead, Chris.
Just on the testing for Everbridge, we've got like six phone numbers and, you know, all kinds of text devices set up. What all goes out on that?
You're going to get it on everything if you have registered it correctly, which is the point of the system. So, for example, I'm registered at my home phone and my cellphone and my daughter's cellphone. And so we'll get all of those.
So it'll go to the backup numbers as well?
Correct.
Roll through all sets?
Correct.
Okay.
Which is one of the reasons this takes so long, because people register multiple numbers.
Right, great, thanks.
You're welcome.
And lastly, I just want to say thank you for bringing us candy. You're wonderful and you're evil at the same time. And point out, in my like six years here, this is by far the most we've ever been given up here, besides warm water. And so, thank you, I think. Thank you very much for that.
Now I know how to win you over.
Well, you could get us a coffee pot.
I'm trying to get Tom Hanks to buy us a coffee machine. He did for the Washington Press Corps, so maybe us, I don't know. But thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Trevor, do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move forward then. We are at the consent calendar. Does anyone want to pull anything from the consent calendar? Yes, we have two items on the consent calendar. No? And we have minutes. Turn it over. Okay?
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay. All agreed. Consent calendar has moved forward. That's the first time in months. Oh, all in favor of moving the consent final?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. We're moving it forward. And we're on to item 4A. 4A is coastal development permit number 15-071, variance number 15-049, minor modification number 15-023, and demolition permit number 17-035. An application for the demolition of an existing single-family residence, construction of a new single-family residence, and associated development at 27360 Pacific Coast Highway. Can we have a report, please?
Good evening, Chair Pearson. The project you have before you this evening is for the demolition of an existing single-family structure and the replacement of that structure with the new single-family structure. And I might be too far to click. I think we are. I have to ask you to do that. Too far.
Can we hire a new city clicker, maybe, or something?
Adrian will help out here with this one. So this project is, has a PCH address. However, the parcel does not touch Pacific Coast Highway. This is located below Joffreys, along Escondido Beach Road, and it is accessed through Escondido Beach Road. And above it, as I mentioned, is Joffreys, as well as the, an apartment complex. The project as proposed, well, as I mentioned, is a demolition of the existing single-family residence, the construction of a new 3,200-square-foot residence, and that residence does include a two-car garage. Currently, there is no garage on site. The owner currently parks parallel in front of his property along Escondido Beach Road. The project proposes a rooftop pool, a seawall with return walls, and that seawall only protects the new onsite wastewater treatment system. There'll be minor landscaping and hardscaping, as well as grading and retaining walls. And it will be a pile-supported foundation for the residence. There are three discretionary requests included with this project. There is going to be a request for a parking variance. And in that variance, it would eliminate the two unenclosed parking spaces that are required by our code. As I mentioned, though, you do have a garage on site now as part of this proposal, which is an improvement because currently there is- is an improvement, because currently, there is no onsite parking. So, we'll have half of the code requirement. The applicant also included a minor modification to reduce the eastern side yard setback by twenty percent. The reason for this, when discussing it with the applicant, is that on the western side yard, they've given a side yard that is in excess of what the city requires, however, they've done that to comply with the fire department's requirements on the western side yard. So, to make up for some of that loss, there was an application to reduce the other side of the home, and currently, the setback that would be provided is similar, if not a bit larger, than what is there today. And that setback is three feet, two inches, rather than the four feet as required by code. And there is also a demolition permit as part of this project, which will be approved as part of the CDP, for the demolition of all that existing development on the site. These are elevations of the proposed home. The proposed home, there was a question about the height measurement of the home. The front half of the home is taken from the center line of the road, which is Escondido Beach Road. However, on the ocean side, that finished floor elevation, when I did verify it again, recommended lowest finished floor elevation does match the recommendation from the project's coastal engineer of twenty-five feet and point three-two. And that's what was used as a zero point. The residence's maximum height is twenty-five feet, but that, the reason for that is the glass railing for the rooftop deck. So, the actual structure doesn't protrude above twenty-four feet of the home part, it's the glass railing for the pool. This is a site plan for the home. As you can see, it occupies the majority of the site. It is set back, though, properly from the street. It is the average of the two neighbors. The neighbors on it are either on the property line, in some cases on this street, or they're actually into the streets right away, or the private street, which is actually part of another property. These are site photos. The photo with the SUV that you see there, the black Suburban, that is currently the front of the existing home. And the photo that is on the left-hand side of the, or excuse me, the right-hand side of the screen, that's taken at an angle, and the purpose of that photo is so that you can see the story poles, and how they're similar to the house next door, which has a rooftop deck as well and glass railing, similar to this proposed design. Essentially, that, in that neighborhood, what I noticed on my site visit, and what I've seen through the years here, is that folks are demolishing the single-story homes for the most part, and putting up these two-story homes. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution approving the project, as well as the included modifications and variants. I'm available for any questions, as well as the applicant and owner. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Richard. Can we have disclosures, please? Jeff?
Yes, I visited the property with Chair Pearson. We met with the applicant's architect, got a perspective of the home, the homes around it, talked a little bit about the parking, talked a little bit about the setbacks and the fact they were moving from one side to the other side to deal with the fire, which was good. And then, looked a little bit at the hillside behind him, which, pretty high up, looks like it was, I don't know, I asked a question regarding, had the city taken a look at that, and they happy with that, and he didn't know, so I'm gonna ask that later on again today. But, thank, that's it.
John?
I visited the site by myself. I, in one of these pictures, there's a black escalade, it's the next-door neighbor. The next-door neighbor came out of their parking spot, and basically, I got a good idea of what you have to do to turn around there. It was a five-point turn. Then the neighbor got out and wanted to tell me that the parking was horrible and blah-blah-blah. But, she was a renter and she didn't care. Then I had some questions, which I emailed to Reva last Thursday, and I got the answers today from Richard. I can either turn in what the email he sent me, or read them when the questions come up.
Okay, I'd say we, since we're here, we maybe go through that when we get to questions. Okay.
Visited the site also, just drove by to kinda get a sense of kind of how it lays out and everything, and I was pretty surprised by how narrow that road is, tucking back there. It's narrow than I realized, and it winds quite a ways back, so it's a little, little tight. Other than that, nothing else.
And my disclosure was pretty much exactly the same as Mr. Euring's. We visited the site, and all the disclosures he made, I would add that I, as I said, another project in this area, I lived in that area in the late seventies, mid to late seventies, and that road is still as narrow as it was back then. So, some things have not changed, from what I could see, actually. Yeah, it's always been like that. It's not, never been a highway there. And now, questions of staff? Jeff? Steve?
Any comment on the hillside behind there?
That actually was part of Commissioner Maz's questions, was about the hillside. I did ask our city geologist to take a look at that and make certain that he did factor that in, and the geotechnical reports for the property did discuss that hillside. It appears that there are no issues with the hillside directly between the property and Pacific Coast Highway. However, to the west, there had been a landslide, I think in the eighties he mentioned, but the pile-supported retaining wall, I believe it was, has addressed that issue. And speaking with one of the neighbors of this project, they're working on a project, actually, to redo the retaining walls that are on the land side of Escondido Beach Road, as, is part of, I think they wanna actually move it back a bit so they could pick up some parking, is what I understood from this neighbor. And at the moment, there appears to be no issues with that hillside based off the reports.
Long as somebody looked at it, yeah.
Question on that?
John?
Well, in your response to me, you told me that this property did not own any property on the other side of the road.
That is correct.
But, the other neighbors do?
Yes, this parcel, or excuse me, the subject parcel pretty much ends at the front of the existing building that you have today. There is a home, I wanna say that's two houses to the east, and the shape of that parcel is, we'll say, like an upside-down L. That person owns the portion of the lot, like, that is the beach, and where the home is, and then working your way to the north, it turns to your left, and that person actually owns the street, that this house, as well as another house, utilizes the street. So, that is completely off, that retaining wall, hillside, all of that is off of this property, as well as the street. Most folks on Escondido Beach Road do own the portion of the roadway in front of their house, however, that's not the case here.
Well, on Plan C point-two-point-zero-zero, it shows what looks like a property line crossing the, the wall and going up at an angle towards Joffreys. Is that, what is that line?
We can have the architect speak to that, but I believe that is actually a portion of the other property. The front property line for this home would be, before you see on the road, it says Escondido Beach Road, private driveway easement. If you drop down, you see the front property line of the neighboring property, and that line continues. There's a line under that pile support, that retaining wall with piles, and that line is the property line, and actually, right in front of the piles and the retaining wall there, it says property line. So, that is completely off this property.
Okay, so, we could not ask them to do the same thing the other person's doing, and create parking spaces?
That's correct.
And then, how does, how is this affected by the Joffreys slide? It looks like it's part of it, and that was a huge slide, they lost their whole parking lot.
According to the geotechnical reports and our staff, this site is not subject to any landslide activity, based off of the reports.
And the fact that they have a monitoring well there?
That monitoring well is part of, based off of what our geotechnical staff could find, is part of the, it's a monitoring well for the purposes of checking the quality of the effluent from the dispersal field from Joffreys. So, that's a water quality testing well, to make sure that we don't have any human markers passing it.
So, but they had no, no comments on the Joffreys slide?
Based off the report and our geotechnical staff, no.
Okay, thank you. I'll wait till after the comments.
Okay, question?
Nothing more?
Okay, shall we open public hearing then? Okay, we're gonna open public hearing, and we have the applicant team, two speakers, Peter Toller? Okay, Tolkien? Yeah, I guess so, T-O-L-L-E-R-N, but, and then Dan Albertson. So, you guys have fifteen minutes? You can reserve any time and save it for rebuttal, there is none at the moment, and away you go.
I think, my name's Peter Tolkien, from Peter Tolkien Architecture. We're gonna reserve most of our time, and we concur with the staff, you know, report and the resolution. I'll just real quickly say, we are adding additional cars where there was, you know, no, no parking down there. It is a very tight site, with the property line being basically the face of the garage, and the property on the street there is not owned by the applicant. So, I think it is an improvement in terms of the parking. As far as the setbacks, ultimately, we are shifting the setback over to the west because of the fire department. We had the requirement for four foot on each side yard. County Fire wants five feet. On the other side, it really comes down to just how tight the site is. When you start taking the dimensions of the legal garage, thickness of walls, and actually just being able to pass into the property, which is about approximately a six-foot accessway on the side, you know, we're talking inches, so we're basically asking for eight-inch excuse me, ten-inch reduction to the, to the, to the four foot to three foot two. So, I think, I'm here to answer questions, I don't know if Dan would like to add anything.
Dan Albertstone? First of all, I just wanted to thank everybody here, and especially to Richard, who I have not met yet, but we're meeting here for the first time, and, you know, I know folks get a lot of complaints regarding the timing. I've expressed my frustration with Richard from time to time, but I do wanna give a shout-out to Richard, because I've always felt, from the very beginning until today, that it was a partnership to the extent that Richard was trying to shepherd the project through as quickly as he could, and as professional as he could, and he's always answered my questions and always there to help. And sometimes, I didn't like the answers, but, you know, I get it, I got the letter recently about, you know, the timing, but I think everybody should know that, that Richard's done a really great job, and I've always, even when speaking with my wife about the frustrations of the time, and I go, I can't get mad at him, he's just such a nice guy, he does, you know, he's doing a great job. So, I thank you, Richard, for that. Lastly, the only thing I wanted to say that I think the commission should know is, as part of the project, when my project was with the fire department, they required, over my objection, but required, so I think it's gonna be helpful down the road, that I, I paid for a survey of the entire street from the very beginning to the very end. So, it showed all the markers, the widths, because they wanted to make sure that their fire truck could get down, and semi-flippantly, I said, well, just get into a truck and go down and see if it could get down there, but they wanted a survey. And so, I paid for the survey, and now the city has a survey of that entire street from the very beginning to the very end. So, thank you again.
All right, thank you. You have almost twelve minutes left, so we're good. All right, does anyone else want to address the commission on this item? Norm?
I don't know very much about the project, but I do know that they're making a huge benefit in terms of environmental protection by putting in an advanced wastewater treatment system, as opposed to a standard septic tank system, which is, probably, the leach field is already clogged by now. So, I think it's worth saying that, that they're making great progress towards protecting the environment.
Thank you, Norm. Hang on, let me, let me close the public hearing here. Anyone else wish to address the commission on this? Okay, seeing no one, I'm gonna close the public hearing. We're back here. John, you had a question?
I have a question, Norm.
Yes, Commissioner?
As head of the wastewater commission, is it required to put in an advanced treatment system when you build a new house on the beach?
Yes, it is.
So, they're doing what they have to do?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we're back here for discussion and eventually a motion here.
I have a question.
Please.
Architect or owner, one or the other? The existing house, there was no parking, no enclosed parking, right?
Correct.
And so, parking was where?
Parking was essentially parallel to the front of the house, like many of the houses on that street, people are parking.
Right.
Basically adjacent. It's not, I believe it's a private road, so it's not like you're parking on a public street, but you're essentially tucked up against your house.
Okay, so, they're parking parallel on the private road? And, and now, you're putting in garages, right? And, and my concern is that, I would say maybe seventy-five percent of the people who have garages use it to store furniture and ping-pong balls and tables and things like that. And so, is there any way that we can ensure that the garages will remain available for actual parking, rather than as, because if the people who were there before, or the older structure, could park parallel on that street, then there's no reason, really, I can see why you wouldn't be able to do the same thing, and I would prefer, if we're going to improve the parking, that it actually be used for parking.
Well, I could tell you what my intention is. I don't like keeping my, I've owned property since, time flies, since nineteen ninety-eight, and I don't like keeping my car out, one for safety, two because of the elements, it's not good. I want a parking garage, and I'm anxious to get a parking garage for those reasons. So, I could make a representation that I intend to use it as a, as a parking garage.
You do, but you may not own the house forever, and I've just, oh, seeing if there was some way that we could ensure that. Richard, has there something come to mind?
We could add a condition to the resolution, or even go so far as a deed restriction to it. The code does require, however, that the inside of the garage remain with the clear space to fit two cars, if that's ever converted. For example, if, say they wanted to convert the laundry room into a closet, and, because this has happened, and someone comes to our counter and tries to apply for a permit to put the washer dryer in, in the garage, if that washer dryer interferes and blocks basically twenty by, or twenty by eighteen feet, if it gets within that dimension, we would deny it, and explain that they have to maintain that twenty by eighteen clear space.
You have to do that without regard to, to us adding anything additional to the, to the resolution, right? Because I don't wanna, I, as you know, I don't, I'm not wild about.
I understand. Yes, that is correct. As the code reads today, we would be keeping an eye on for a twenty by eighteen-foot clear space, to make sure no permanent structures or wastewater hookups are placed in that space.
John?
Richard, from my understanding, I think they said it, that the reason why the east side setback is three-point-two inches, three, three feet, two inches, is because they want it, because they had to give what's required on the other side, the five feet. Is there any other reason, other than they want that extra one foot, ten inches?
As I, yes, you are correct, as you've explained it. They, they're trying to offset the loss of the, the western side that was given for the fire department, and what they're trying to achieve is a bit more building area because of the constraints on the site. And if the commission feels that the findings for the minor modification can't be met, you know, in terms of how the neighborhood is and the character of the neighborhood, then, of course, this house could be built without that reduction. It's just that it ensures them the space to have a meaningful size, the meaningful areas for the garage, thickness of the walls, as the architect explained, plus, it allows for a bit more of an area to have a passageway through there, rather than something that's more constrained.
What is the frontage on the side with the garage?
Forty feet.
Forty feet?
Forty feet.
Twenty or forty?
Forty.
Forty feet, and a garage takes seventeen feet for a double garage.
Well, actually, the, the code requirement is a ten by eighteen-foot space.
So, twenty feet?
So, the interior dimensions of the garage. So the interior dimensions of the garage have to be 20 feet, plus that's the interior clear space at minimum, and then we've got to factor in the thickness of the walls as well.
So they have over 18 feet, that is only, it could be used for a garage, it could be used for anything. It's not like they're constrained on the garage. They have 18 feet of extra.
I'm sorry, I'm misunderstanding, if I were to start breaking down the size, you had 40 feet, so you take away five feet, we're down to 35. Take out another four feet, we're down to 31, and they have basically 11 feet. And then in that 11 feet, they have to put walls in any walkways.
Right, but the one, one foot, eight inches, there's 11 feet to play with, correct? Including walls and everything else.
I think it's only eight inches, because the fire department didn't require, it's four foot's what they need.
No, the, if you look on the fire department approval sheet, it says five. The city requires four.
That's on the west side, the setback we were talking about is on the east side, which is going from four feet to three, what we're requesting is three foot two.
Question, Richard, the fire department doesn't say east side is, or west side is five and the, and the east side is four, that's our code.
Our code is four and four.
And theirs is five and five.
Or, at least five feet on one side, has been my experience with the fire department. And the fire department did review the site plan that Mr. Tolkien prepared, and based off their review, they were satisfied with the access on the one side.
Okay, could you put up the slide of, the, the first slide of the overhead of the aerial view? Can I have your pointer? It's the very first one, there you go. This house here, am I correct, has a zero, zero lot line setback.
Yes, that's correct, based off of the survey.
Okay, so, between that building and that building, you say it's three feet, two inches.
It's actually a little bit less than that now, so we're asking for it to be three foot two.
Yeah.
That's correct, the proposal is three feet, two inches.
Three feet, two. And this is a, a street with no turnaround, and the nearest turnaround is over here, okay, for a fire truck. Now, this house here, as I understand from your reply, has five feet on its side.
Yes, that's correct.
Because the new houses have to have five feet, this house has five feet, so that when the fireman comes along, and this thing's on fire, or that thing's on fire, he's got 10 feet over here, and he's got 3.2 feet to go in and drag his hose and get in between the two buildings, he can barely turn around. So my real concern is, they have 11 feet from here to here to play with, and we're gonna risk a fireman's life going down 3.2 feet between two buildings, between two walls, is that, that's what the plan is, isn't it?
Yes, that's correct, three feet, two inches.
Well, I, I'm not gonna be able to make a finding that that's, that's safe. And I think that's one of the things, one of the things about planning is eventually you get down to where, you know, there's roads wide enough and there's fire department setbacks. And if you just keep saying three, three feet is enough, it's, it's just flat out not enough. The question is, I asked the commissioners, would you walk down that if there's a fire? That's, that's what I'm saying, even if you're a professional and you got all your gear on, would you walk down there?
I, I guess my response would be to wonder why the fire department approved it then.
They didn't.
They did.
They did.
The fire department has reviewed, we had an extensive review of the fire department, which including, as Dan said, us mapping the entire road, locating all the turnarounds, the widths, the grade. And they looked at it in the way they fight the fires, they want their, they want a five foot. They, they weren't concerned with the three foot two setback, they wanna, they need that five foot, which is where they will fight the fire from.
So if this building's on fire, they're gonna put it out from over here?
The one thing you should also understand, maybe it's obvious to you, there, there's, we're putting in a sprinkler system into this property. There's not one right now, so that property is gonna have a sprinkler system.
But this one won't.
My, but my house will have a sprinkler system.
Correct, so if this one's on fire, you're gonna have to go down there and try to put it out.
I, I don't know how they're gonna fight the fire, but I could tell you that I go up and down there all the time. And whether you're talking about the four feet, which was required, or the reduction we're asking for, it's, it's, to me, having walked up and down there, it's, it's immaterial. The, the difference between what would be required and what we're requesting, in addition to the sprinkler system, in addition to the five feet the other side, and again, we are just looking at properties that are just on top of each other, just the way they've been built over the years.
Okay, and, and this isn't really a question, but we're making a choice of putting five feet here or five feet here. This already has five feet next to it, this will now be a 10-foot easement, this will be a 3.2. Why not put the five there and the 3.2 over there? My basic point is, you're not gonna fight a fire in this building from the, along here unless you have a fire bug. You, you can't ask somebody to go into 3.2 feet when it's on fire. Now, the other thing I did notice on my inspection, that all the gas utilities, meters and everything, are in that 3.2 feet. So you actually, it's really about 12 inches to get around it. And, basically, I think, when we build buildings in Malibu, we have to, we have to understand that we have fires. I lived, and I didn't disclose this, I lived down the beach for 16 years, I've walked by this maybe 5,000 times. Now granted, that was a couple decades ago, but, it's my opinion, even down on east Malibu, on the beach, where we've got these dinky little houses that are 2,000 square feet, we make them put in five feet. And I can't make a finding that just because the owner wants to make that skinny, it's safe, the only.
Commissioner Pearson, in light of Commissioner Mazza's disclosure, I suggest that you open the public hearing if they, again, if they'd like to redress that comment from that disclosure.
My comment about living there?
That your disclosure, that you said that, that you lived on that area and you saw that there were.
Well, maybe I should expand on that, I lived there from 1972 to 1988. Whether that's material now, I don't know, but we can reopen the hearing if you want.
If they have a comment about the disclosure.
Okay, I can do that, please hold one minute. I'm reopening public hearing if anyone has a comment on Mr. Mazza's disclosure. Seeing Mr. Norm Haney. Hi, Norm.
Good evening. The, the way in which the fire department will fight a fire such, I'm sorry?
Go ahead, Norm.
The, the fire department looks at a piece of property, and if they can get their hose from the truck through the access and around within 300 feet, then that's acceptable to them. They will fight the fire from the beach and from the street side. Having said that, unless there is a particular objection to Commissioner Mazza's comment about shifting, I'm not sure that's not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. Okay, anyone else want to address Mr. Mazza's disclosure?
If I may add something, though, about the fire aspect of this project?
Yeah, let me, let me close the public hearing quickly, okay, we're closing it again, as per legal counsel's advice.
Thank you.
Yes, Richard?
I'd like to add, and the owners, who's very patient about this, Mr. Albertstone, but when it, in terms of the fire department review on this before, staff published a staff report and made any final determinations, this project was held up with the fire department, I want to say for roughly a year, if not more. And with the fire department, and I did speak with the reviewer, Johnny McGee, what they found to be of issue with this is not the setback. And that's part of the reason why staff felt that the findings could be made and made its recommendation. But in discussions with Johnny, it wasn't the access around the site that was the issue. What really held this project up, and I believe it went to the superiors, if I'm not mistaken, above Johnny, and Dan can expand on this more, because he was the one who went to all the various meetings with the fire captain. But the issue was really access down that road. The fire department wanted him to survey the road, and I believe actually widen the road in certain areas. And the issues there were that he doesn't own that land, and his easement language doesn't give him the ability to widen that road for fire access. And as you can imagine, too, when you drove down there, you probably noticed that there are neighbors who have improvements on the land side and the ocean side. In order to satisfy the requirement, Dan would have been ripping out those folks' improvements, which just really isn't practical. So just to reiterate, the main issue here, according to the fire department, was really getting their trucks to the site. They were satisfied with the plans. Part of our review process is that when you come to the counter, we do date stamp a set of plans for you. So the fire department knows that planning has seen that set of plans, we give a referral to the applicant, and they take that to the fire department. So they did see this, and like, as I mentioned, the real issue was getting there with a truck.
Thank you, Richard.
Why does the fire department sign off say five feet?
The reason for that is the access on the side. What you have here is not uncommon for a beach home. I was working on a home in Malibu Road, and it was the same situation, actually, that one was right on the property line, and the fire department was okay with it because the five-foot clear to sky access that they needed. And as Norm also mentioned, with the amount of the 300 foot with the hose run, since they had that on one side, it can get from the street around the house to the beach, they were satisfied with that. But they do require five feet, and that's correct, but just, it depends on the length, and in this case, they only need it on one side.
All right, thank you. Okay, I think we know where we lie on that one now, whatever we think. Any other points anyone want to bring up? He's busy typing a letter to, who is it you're writing?
Okay, so, I got a couple, so, I'm just trying to first, kind of going back to some of the comments earlier, the two spots kind of lost, two spots gained. So just to be clear, you could park in the garage, and then two cars, if you're, they're your friends, I guess, could still park in front of it as well, theoretically, if you could just make a comment on that?
I, I think that's, that's correct.
Yeah, so I mean, so you're, you're, like you said, you're effectively gaining those two spots, but you're not officially designing those as, as real spots, because you can't get out of your garage when they're occupied.
Right, and, and I think as, just as somebody mentioned before, I think Richard mentioned, my neighbor immediately to the west is trying to work on moving the wall back on the Joffre side so, to gain more space, which I think will be helpful for everybody down there, it is a narrow street, but yes.
And then, and on that comment, so as was pointed out in the comment, the property line for that neighboring property goes basically in front of your, your lot, right?
It's, it's so interesting, I've, because I've lived there so long and I've dealt with the map, the map, it was the land of Matthew Keller around there, and you probably heard the name before I did, but it kind of zigzags all over the place. But if two houses down to the, to the west, to the east, the last name is Stern, who owned that house that developed Joffre's, and I think she owned, they owned the Joffre's property, that house, and I think they developed and specked out the houses going east. There's, you could kind of see three newer ones that are two stories, I think she did that. And then her property, her ownership then is the street all the way up to the end of my property line. And then the, the house to the west has the street going up the hill. So it's all over the map, but I don't own the street right in front of me. I have an easement, a, a access easement going in and out.
Got it, and then, I know we talked about you not being able to develop, or any requirement to develop something you don't own, but are you currently working with that owner, would that be a shared cost if the street were widened?
It's an interesting question, the owners, somebody, an owner's representative had reached out to me, whether I was interested in sharing the cost of it, and I said, depending upon what it would be, I would. They were dealing with, I think, the property up above, I'm not really sure, because they were gonna shorten that hillside, they thought they could do it. And I hadn't heard back, and it was my intention to follow up with them, and I just haven't. But they haven't followed up with me either, so I don't know how far along they are in that process.
Okay, I did a, go, go.
When you park in front of your garage, you're actually parking on the street, correct? Your property line, you have a zero lot line.
Yes, yeah, yes.
So you're parking on the street.
Correct.
The 20-foot wide street.
Everybody is.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm not the only one. I mean, up and down that street is, if you've been down there, you could see people park there. And I wasn't the one that converted it into a non-garage, that happened before I purchased the property.
No, my only question is, when you do that, you're now creating a 12-foot wide street.
I don't know the width of it, but.
Condition now, though.
But for the last 20 years, I could tell you that everybody, there's access in and out, and we have good relationships with our neighbors, and everybody, you know, is good. There's only two houses beyond me.
If anybody cares, that, that used to be owned by Joffre's as an apartment building, those three houses. And Murphy that owned it, the lease expired on the land, and that's when they converted them into three houses from an apartment building.
That's interesting, that, the property, just the one with the piles just west of me, that was the first time, I believe, that lot had ever been developed, unless you know differently.
No, that's about right, there were four lots, they were part of the apartment building.
Interesting, I'm sorry to take up your time.
I did have a couple more, and then just another one more to staff. We, we acknowledged that the road is already very, very narrow there, and we said the argument was, well, we'll just let him match the depth of other, of their structures, like the one to his west, how it's built effectively to the same depth as his. Any comment as to, like, why we continue to allow a street to be so narrow, or, and any thoughts on that, just an observation?
Our, what happened here is basically we follow the code setback. Sometimes what we do ask, though, is that folks, if it's feasible, step the front, the first floor of the house back from the street so that we could get the on-street parking, or somehow try to, you know, ideally, or, excuse me, the off-street, or the unenclosed parking, get it off the street. We do our best to try to get that on, get four spaces on a beachfront lot. The reason here why we did not ask for it is just, given the shallow depth of the lot and the size of the home compared to other homes, it would essentially take away square footage, and that's why, we just went with the code requirement.
Okay, and then another one, there was a letter about the lateral access easement, was that granted? I, I don't recall.
At this point in time, no, we did forward that to the, I forwarded it to both Peter and Dan. And at the time that we worked on this, no, Dan did not grant the lateral access easement.
And what's the, what's the expectation normally in something like this, I know SMRC put it down?
It's, MRC asked if he would voluntarily grant it, and we, like, as I mentioned, we passed that request along to him, but it's not something, I, I think Trevor could speak to this, that we would extract.
Yeah, under Nolan and Dolan's standard, there wouldn't be a benefit going here that would require him to grant that type of easement in this situation, so.
So like theoretically looking at the map, and I think the people from Joffre's will walk down those stairs that are kind of to the right of the property here? If somebody took the stairs down and cut it right, he could say, you can't walk past my house, is that how it would work?
There's the wet sand easement, that they could always walk on the, the wet sand throughout California and get through there, in terms of putting an easement on his actual property, he's not removing an easement or taking something away that would sort of justify imposing an easement, would be our recommendation in this situation.
Okay, so the, the public would still have their normal wet sand access across the front of the property, just not any further up if he had granted another lateral easement?
Yeah, if you'd taken away some kind of public access or some type of public benefit that would justify adding it, putting an easement in, be a different situation. Sometimes the coastal commission will take a aggressive stance on these, since they're less concerned with being sued, they don't have to pay judgments when they lose, we all do.
I have one other item that I'd like to discuss, if they're all done. This is the second house we've seen in a month, where the finished floor wave uprush study has come to one hundredth of a foot of the street level. One hundredth of a foot, now, the odds of that happening on one house is probably a billion to one. The odds of that happening on two houses is probably a quadrillion to one, okay? So, I am very concerned that staff will look at a wave uprush study, which appears to have been reverse engineered, okay? Point 5.2, and the street is point 5.2, is, to me, a mathematical impossibility. And this is the second time we've had this mathematical impossibility, because people want flat floors. They don't want to follow the code stepping down. Now, I didn't go over the wave uprush study, I'm not an engineer, but I do have a master's in statistics, and I know that's not possible. Now, at what point does staff come in and question a wave uprush study that comes in with a result like that? with a result like that?
I did verify that the wave up rush report that was stamped and signed by a California licensed engineer, who's taking responsibility for the report, it does have that number in it, 25.32. And our staff reviews it, our coastal engineer. When we do question it is if our coastal engineer feels that based off of that report, looking at other reports, there's some sort of gross error, or if somebody gives us a conflicting report, same with the survey, or if a neighbor has a concern over something and they present information that presents a conflict, our engineers look at that and we may ask for another engineer to opine on it. But the reports in this case have been reviewed by our city's coastal engineer. It is a wet stamped, signed report by a professional that's putting his license on the line. I would say that if you'd like to go further into this, I recommend we continue the hearing to bring those professionals into the room, but I can tell you that I did double check that based off of your question today, and that number does appear in the wave up rush report that was provided.
So my question is of Trevor. At what point, I'm not going to make him go do another wave up rush study because the guy's already stamped it, he's not going to, he's not going to admit he lied, if I can use that term, which to me statistically, he did. At what point can we just say, it's no good, it just can't possibly be that? And how often do we have to have that happen to us as a planning commission?
Well, a couple of issues there. Number one is that if you're going to disagree with what's found there, we need to have substantial evidence to show that, but I think the step would be exactly what Richard says, is to bring in their expert and bring in our expert to discuss and explain how they came to that calculation, and then discover whether you think there are errors within how it's done. I mean, I think their license would be on the line if they're falsifying that report.
You are correct. He's fiduciarily responsible. Once he puts his stamp on that, the city is relying on that, and he takes all liability.
Has the city ever done anything about that on any engineering report?
To my knowledge, not for a coastal engineering report. I want to say though, yes, we've had some questions about surveys. We had, actually on one of my projects, there was an error in the survey, and we did resolve and have that corrected prior to permits being issued.
Okay, my only point is statistically, and you know, I know that statistics can lie, but they are never that coincidental, ever, ever, ever. So, so I just want to say that fool me once, fool me twice, but don't fool me the third time.
Let me ask you a question, Richard. I'm looking at the photo and it's clear to me visually, without being able to measure it, that that house is going to have a higher floor.
Can you point to it on the window?
Okay, so the height here is considerably higher than the neighbors from what I can see. So is there any chance of the fact that it equals apparently the height of the road, did they follow the minimum, or does it, did they raise, or were they able to raise it up a little bit just to be even with the road?
No, the documentation there is not, is not a reflection of the roadway height, center line of the road is not part of the consideration. It's, the consideration runs from where is the, from what I could read in the updates, it stems from, the engineer provided the height of the FEMA floodplain. Then what we come up with from there is then we look at the height of the seawall because of overtopping and concerns of protection for the septic system, and that seawall is actually, I think I want to say it was around 20, 22 feet was a recommendation for that. And then if it is overtopped, we want to obviously keep water out of the house, and then that's where he gets that final number. In the ideal world, I understand statistics and the logic there, however, in the ideal world, what you should see is that homes kind of all look about the same in an area of the beach in terms of where their finished floors are. So this house would match the more current development. That's typical, for example, that's a problem down in Malibu Road, sometimes folks come in here and they talk about views because the older homes were built much closer, and we're out there telling the homeowner of these new homes to build up higher because of the requirements are a lot more strict now than they were, say, in 1950, and there's a lot more science in it. So in general, new homes should all kind of equal about the same height. The fact that this equals the center line of the road, granted, yes, that's unusual. However, we're presented with the situation where, as Trevor pointed out, we have two state licensed engineers, our engineer is a certified engineer as well, that have opined on the report, and our engineer agrees with the findings, and that's how we have based this.
All right, well.
I'd like to make a motion.
I've got a couple more questions if I could. Sorry, I just, can I borrow the pen again, or the pointer thing? So just kind of looking, just two comments kind of tied together. When I looked at the signature pages on the fire approval with all that scratching out, I just, it got me like concerned. So I'm trying to just kind of follow up on what Commissioner Mazza pointed out. The, if there is a fire in this structure, then my interpretation is that they left, I assume that fire looked at kind of the width here and said they could bring somebody down kind of this channel to help put out a fire in this structure. If there's a fire on this or that structure, they would bring them down this roughly 10-foot wide, eight to 10-foot, whatever it works out to, that's why they kind of left out that really narrow structure, or that really narrow gap is what my interpretation was. That, because I mean, simply back up, the fact that everything was so scratched out in the fire review just makes me question that much more, what's going on? And then I'm just interpreting all the input we just got today, which is really saying what I just said. It looks like they feel that's wide enough to fight fires on these two structures, and this other channel will be wide enough to fight the other two structures. Is that kind of your interpretation of Johnny's input?
Yes, and to clarify the scratching out comment, I've actually had this discussion with the fire department, and the first scratch is the J, the second scratch is the top of his M, and then that final scratch is the M for May. Johnny has a relatively large signature. I've actually seen him take up more of the page.
Okay, I thought he was marking that whole section out.
And I was only laughing because I already knew that.
I'm sorry then, okay.
Yes, yeah, and like I said, mentioned, I had this conversation with CJ up there, and when I called CJ, I said, CJ, my first, I didn't know, I'll be truthful with you, I didn't recognize that at first either. And I called CJ and he said, well, who's, who signed off on the project? And I said, I don't know, it looks like a bunch of chicken scratch. And CJ said, oh, is it a big signature that's real flamboyant and takes up the whole page? I said, yeah, he's like, oh, that's Johnny. So that's how he's known.
He's Donald Trump's cousin.
All right, well, and then the other quick question I had was for Norm. You had made a comment of a double negative, so I don't know if you were siding with what Commissioner Mazza said, or saying it's not a good idea. You had said in the comment of moving the house over a bit to give more room on the one side, not sure that's not a good idea. Did you mean it's a good idea, or you mean, don't do that?
Commissioner Marks, I'm unfamiliar of, I really don't know these owners. I understand the fire department's development standards because I work with them often, and of course, the wastewater treatment systems that are going in. I don't know the reasons why this particular architect and owner decided to move the house the way they've moved the house. So I really can't opine on why one side is eight inches smaller than what the city, what the city normally requires and why the other one's five feet. I can say that the fire department wants to take their truck and come down through the five feet and come around and be able to fight that fire, and I said 300 feet. The requirement is 300 feet around the entire area. It's 150 feet to get to where the hose can reach and they feel comfortable. I don't know the dimensions on this particular house, but from the view on the plans, it appears to me that 150 feet would put them right in the middle of the house that we're concerned about, not this house, but the one that's to the, to the east. Those are my comments, thank you.
Got it, so to replay that back, then you could see the house moving all else considered, that moving it eight inches or 10 inches would make sense to you?
Other than the fact that I don't know the reasons why they designed it the way they did, there may be other reasons that I'm totally unfamiliar with.
Got it, and then the last thing is just more to staff on the road widening, widening observations, because we did go to the trouble of getting a survey here. Is there any plan to come back to those property owners where that road is narrowest, or is anything required by fire, or is that just left to lie?
At this point, for the purposes of fire department, correct, it's left to lie. The project that the owner was alluding to, I spoke with a representative from the neighbor that would be directly to the west, and it sounds like they are pursuing widening their area to have more room, but it's the homeowners getting together doing this, it's not a mandated requirement.
Thank you, nothing more.
Is there, is there any code enforcement on parking on that street?
It's a private street.
It's a private street, but it's 20 feet wide.
There are no code enforcement cases that I'm aware of relating to parking. The code enforcement that I've been aware of on this street, it's usually building violations.
Okay, if everybody is done with questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the project as staff recommends with the change of the five-foot easement from the west side of the house to the east side of the house and vice versa. And that will allow, I'm doing that because I can't make the finding that it's safe unless there's five feet and that on the west side of the house has the five feet of the other house also combined in there. So you'll have about eight feet instead of three feet on that side. So on one side, you'll have about eight feet, and on the other side, you'll have five feet.
Chair Pearson, if I may.
Yes, please.
If that is something that the commission is considering, I would recommend that we continue the hearing to allow, and the applicant may also want to speak to this too, but at least from the point of planning, I would just like to say that I believe we should continue it if you could, so that the applicant would have the opportunity to go back to the fire department, because right now, what you have before you is a fire department review and approval for five-foot access on the west side. If we flop that over to the east, I can't give you a recommendation on it, we really should have the fire department.
We wouldn't have an approval at this point, you're saying?
Correct, I think the fire department referral is very specific to this project, not to the proposed amendment.
Peter?
I was just going to say, my discussions with the fire department, they actually like the easement on that side because it actually gives them a lot more room, because you basically get five and five. They were not concerned because their hose, they can get their hose all the way around. And then from a, from a building code standpoint, you know, there's, there's fire rating on the wall that's, in a sense, that wall that's closer three foot two from the building next door, including, you know, the required sprinklers, which wasn't required, you know, years ago when many of these houses were built. So I think from their standpoint, this was, I mean, this is a long discussion with the fire department. I mean, the road was key, but we also did discuss the access point. From the, from the standpoint of access, there is a fire department turnaround, it doesn't meet exactly current standards to the letter of the code, just a couple houses to the east. But through, after going, after Dan spending the money to map, to survey the entire area, they looked at everything, including the grades. I mean, it was really looking at how could they get their current truck down there to fight this fire, and where's the best point for them to fight this fire? So I don't believe that they really want, like, let's say, put the five feet on the other side so we have like two five, that wasn't the discussion. The discussion is they want as much access, the bigger the better through there. In the case of a fire, they're going to just like break down the fence, it could be the neighbor's fence, whatever they got to do to get in there. So that was, that's what I heard from there.
Hang on a sec.
I had a question on that comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Architect, the house next door isn't to code, doesn't have firewalls and doesn't have sprinklers. Isn't that your main? If your house is fireproof and the house next door isn't, it doesn't mean there's a fire.
But I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, the house to the east of you.
Correct.
Is probably a 50s house.
50s or 60s.
Yeah, no fire sprinklers, no new fire codes.
Correct.
Why would that be less susceptible to fire?
I'm not saying the house is less susceptible to fire, I'm saying the, we can only control what we're building on the property that we, that Dan owns.
And I agree, I agree.
So the, the building that we're going to build is going to be much more fire resistant with fire sprinklers, and it will be built to the code and approved by the fire department. So of course, you know, it's a sort of similar, similar comment about the sanitation that was brought up earlier. You know, it's, the codes have gotten a lot safer, let's say, and of course, this is a complicated site in terms of it's impacted because it's tight and all those houses that are down there on the beach are on small, tight lots, and, and often you are looking at solutions. I mean, the whole reason for the 10 feet actually does come down, when you start looking at the thicknesses of walls, I know I'm changing the subject, but when you start looking at those eight inches, those eight inches are really big because you have a three-foot walkway and a stairway that goes up to the second floor at six feet, those are code minimums in the building code. So, so it's all, there's a lot of, it's kind of a domino situation in terms of how tight this whole thing is, and this design for the house came out of, in a sense of balance of all these various issues.
Okay, thank, thank you. Hang on a sec, there's no second on the motion at this point? No? No?
I don't.
No? Okay, so the motion dies.
Okay.
Can I have another?
I'm going to move the staff recommendation. I think there's sufficient evidence to support the variance finding. As far as the minor modification is concerned, the only required finding is the one regarding neighborhood character and.
It's actually two findings.
I'm sorry, what?
There's actually two findings?
Two findings for the minor.
Well, the two findings, the other one being that the project's consistent with the policies of the Malibu LCP, which does allow for minor modifications, which makes it consistent. So I am not an engineer, I'm not a fireman. My understanding of our job here is to, is to accept the, the people who do know about these things, and the fire department has signed off on it. The, the, the other thing that, that really concerns me is that this gentleman has obviously had a long and protracted discussion with the fire department about this already. I think if we tell him that we have, he has to go back to the fire department again, he may have a stroke right in front of us. So I'm, I'm going to support the staff recommendation.
Can, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, can we have roll call, please, Kathleen?
Just.
Yep, go ahead.
Last Monday, I had experience with the fire department, and, and what I learned is if they wanted more space, they'll tell you. I mean, I, there was absolutely no hesitation when those guys showed up to put out a fire. I mean, they, they know what they want, so if they wanted more, I think we would have heard about it.
Thanks for that input. Thank you.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Huring?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
No.
Vice Chair Marks?
Yes.
Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, and sadly, I need to ask for a five-minute recess. I know you guys have been waiting, but we'll be right back in five minutes. I know you guys have been waiting, but we'll be right back in five minutes. Five A, conditional use permit number 17-006, an application to permit the continued operation of the Country Kitchen, a restaurant in the commercial neighborhood zoning district at 21235 Pacific Coast Highway. Can we have a report, please?
Yes, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the conditional use permit for 21235 PCH, the Country Kitchen Restaurant. The property is located on the north side of PCH in the community neighborhood or CN zoning district. The location is in the commercial center near the intersection of PCH and Rambla Pacifica Street. The proposed CUP is to allow for the continued operation of the Country Kitchen Restaurant, which has been in operation since the mid 1950s, and consists of 850 square feet of interior kitchen and takeout window area, and 550 square feet of outdoor patio seating area. The subject CUP does not propose any remodel or site alterations, and does not propose any interior seating area. Currently, the restaurant operates seven days a week between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. The applicant proposes to continue the same hours of operation. The restaurant does not currently provide alcohol service, and no alcohol service was proposed with the subject CUP. The CUP has been conditioned to adhere to the noise ordinance and prohibits live music and amplified sound unless in compliance with an approved temporary use permit, of which the property would be allowed six per year. The CUP has also been conditioned to allow staff to inspect the property as needed to verify compliance with the conditions of approval. Should it be determined that a violation of conditions has occurred, the CUP would be subject to revocation and termination of all rights contained within. Staff has received correspondence in favor of the Country Kitchen Restaurant, as well as correspondence from the adjacent property owner concerned with the current parking situation of the entire commercial center. All correspondence has been included as part of the packet. In summary, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 18-04, approving the project as conditioned. And this concludes my presentation, and the applicant and staff are available for questions.
Thank you very much for your report, and can we do disclosures first, please? Jeff?
Eaten there many, many times, and know what the parking situation is.
I've eaten there on occasion, and I had a meeting with Don Schmitz at the Country Kitchen to talk about the permit. Didn't learn anything that basically wasn't in the staff report.
I've eaten there probably 600, 700 times. And I know the parking situation, and I did talk to Don Schmitz for about five minutes on the phone. I learned nothing new.
I had breakfast there on Sunday, and it was good.
I forgot, I should add that I also talked to Don Schmitz last Friday, and didn't learn anything that wasn't in the staff report.
Okay, and I talked with Don Schmitz by complete chance at the exact same time as Mr. Euring. I dropped by to get a bite of food on my way into town, and Steve and Don were chatting, so I joined in there and canceled our Friday appointment instead. I also need to add that I lived for a time up on Rambla Vista there, and honestly, Maury and his partner Steve took incredible care of me growing up. A bit of a dysfunctional family at the time, and I believe there was a time, I'm disclosing this all on perfect purpose, that Maury and Steve fed me for a month before I could kind of reel my mom in to pay them. And that is pretty heartfelt, and I'll never forget it. So I happen to know they're really, really good humans, and I know we don't vote on that. I want to further go on and say, so, and I know the parking intimately, and I know where people park when it's crowded. I understand the intricacies of the area. I also say with that, I feel completely more than capable of following the code and making the findings. I don't eat there that often anymore. I haven't actually seen Steve in a while. I'm sorry, Maury in a while, and though I do go by sometimes for food, but yes, that was back in the 70s, and I just wanted to make a full disclosure.
And that relationship won't affect your decision tonight?
Not in one bit at all.
Did any of that information provide you, any of your disclosures provide any information that's not in the staff report, which you could, will rely on in making your decision tonight?
Part about me eating there a lot wasn't in the staff report.
You're not going to rely on that in making your decision, though, I hope?
Food's pretty good. I don't know. I'm kidding, of course not. No, not at all. I did, I did want to bring it up, though, to be honest, as I, you know, Malibu resident, lived right there, know them well, understand who they are as human beings, will not affect my decision on this one bit.
We've got to start getting a list of places in town you haven't lived for a period.
I have lived, I think I've said it, pretty much every neighborhood in Malibu. I've lived in Big Rock, I guess I knew that. Anyhow, questions of staff? Steve? Okay, Don?
A while ago, the Country Liquor moved from this building to the building next to it. At that time, and we approved the CUP, at that time, did it have adequate parking for the Country Liquor in its new location?
Did the Country Liquor store have adequate parking?
Yes.
No, I believe the entire shopping center over there is out of compliance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other, Chris, questions or anything right now?
No, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to open the public hearing. And give me a second. The applicant team is, I guess, Don. Are you the applicant team, Don?
Yes, I'm the team.
Okay, you're the team. And we have four other speakers after you, just so you know, Don. And you have 15 minutes, and you may reserve time, as you know.
Thank you, commissioners. Don Schmitz, on behalf of the applicants, we really do need to work on the verbiage, Trevor, in regards to the commissioners saying that they learned absolutely nothing in the ex parte meetings. I'm not sure that's entirely correct, but I know they're following your directions.
Nothing they would rely on outside the staff report.
Outside the staff report, that's an important nuance. I want to thank your staff and you commissioners for the time that you invested in regards to looking at this. I know that this is literally an institution in our town. I want to talk about it a little bit, and it will be a blessed me, short presentation. I'll retain the remainder of the time for rebuttal if necessary. The PowerPoint is also very short. You know where the property is located and the configuration of the property. This is just about the oldest shopping center in the city of Malibu. It was built around in the 1940s. It was formerly the Malibu La Costa Cafe in the 1940s, and I want you to know that the creation of these PowerPoint slides caused quite a stir in my office. Associates would walk by and they would ooh and ah at the vehicles that you can see in the pictures there. And you can see Malibu La Costa Cafe. So although it was not Malibu Country Kitchen, it's been a, it's been a cafe forever, certainly since before any of us were born. It evolved into the country store during the 1950s, and then turned into the Country Kitchen in 1972. Just point out idly that the Dodge van there is identical to one of my roommates at UCSB, where I did my undergraduate work. And you can see a blow up there of the location. This is again in 1972. So the Country Kitchen floor plan is something which is in the staff report. You've got 850 square foot where the food prep is done, and coming into the, the outdoor window, people sit outside in luxurious accommodations on the plastic seats, which is some 550 square feet, and as the staff report references, it can seat anywhere from 10 to 15 people. There is no new plumbing fixtures or tenant improvements or anything which is proposed as a component of this application. This is strictly a CUP to continue the existing use that has been there for some 60 years. We're processing this pursuant to the municipal codes, Section 1760040. It doesn't constitute an intensification of use. It is just to maintain a use that has been there before 1993. 1760 of the municipal code 10, the purpose of, is to bring into the review process these existing uses, which were there before 1993, since before we became a city. It's for uses that were lawfully established, and to speak towards the use itself and consistency with the use, which in this particular case is the CN zone. And the findings are in the staff report. There's multiple findings how, in fact, Country Kitchen is consistent with that CN, CN zone. So we had some, 20 years after March 26, 1993, is when everybody was supposed to come into conformance. The staff report talks about how there's not available space to address the parking deficiency and to answer Commissioner Mazza's query in regards to Country Liquor. No, the, the adjacent shopping center, which looks like it's all one shopping center, it has the same deficiency of parking. The findings that you made was that moving the Country Liquor store from this center, center, to right next door was permissible because there was no additional parking demand for the Country Liquor to go into the space that it was replacing what had previously been like a sunglass shop and other retail uses. And so the staff report goes on to state that, however, as there's no intensification of use proposed with the CUP, the subject site is allowed to maintain the existing non-conforming parking. In 2013, there was a staff report that was presented to the city council, which discussed this component of our general plan and municipal code in regards to these, some 50 uses which were legal non-conforming uses before the incorporation of the city of Malibu. Country Kitchen was included on that list. Since that staff report, as of February 5, 2018, five of those businesses that were on that original list of 50 have closed. Three became compliant through the conditional use permit, which then one which subsequently closed, and Country Liquor, Commissioner Mazza, was one of those that were brought into compliance. In that 2013 staff report, the staff went on to report to the council, staff does not foresee any significant hardship with implementing the CUP compliance project as it is not the city's intention to require the uses to cease operating. I floated around putting some of the quotes of the council members up there in regards, said, no, they were not seeking to, to take any of these cherished uses and make it impractical for them to stay. It was just to take the use and put it into place so that there could be special conditions in regards to operation and things of that nature, which are not currently burdening these applications, and that, which is being placed on the application for you tonight. So in conclusion, the restaurant is operated, a restaurant has operated there since the 1940s. This one's been there since the 19, early 1970s. It is a non-conforming use. We're bringing it into the mainstream by processing this conditional use permit. It does not constitute an intensification of use. There's no new plumbing. There's no proposals to serve alcohol or anything of that nature. It's the same thing that's been there for a very, very long time. So with that, I will, I will go ahead and wrap up. I'm available for any questions that you may have, and I'll retain the remainder of the time for rebuttal if necessary.
Thank you, Don. You have nine minutes remaining. Our next speaker is Paul Grisante, followed by Kevin Ruiz.
Good evening, planning commissioners, and it's wonderful to be here on such a non-controversial thing. And I think probably the only thing that surprised me is that John has actually eaten more there than our family has. We lived on Carbon Mesa Road for many years, and the. We lived on Carbon Mesa Road for many years, and the kids, who are now 38, 40, and 43, were so distressed to hear that there was something that might change with the Country Kitchen. When they come to town, they don't live here anymore, they always stop by the Country Kitchen and come home with at least one paper bag. So everybody loves it. It is an institution. Please keep it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Ruiz?
How are you gentlemen doing today or tonight? I wish I was as smart as you guys and be able to articulate what I want to say. So I'm just going to come straight from the heart and just tell you how I feel. I loved the Country Kitchen ever since I was little. My dad brought me there when he couldn't pay someone to babysit me, and I would eat there, and I, I fell in love, just like everyone else did. And it makes me happy, and I don't want that place to go away, because that's taking something away, not only for me, but for my family, but it's taking something away that, that's just like so, like beloved from this community, and like, you don't want that to go away. You want it to be here. People, they want to see like, you know, like a progression with business, but the honest truth is that if you take that away, then you're taking away a part of Malibu that's like whole. It's, it's heart. That's what it is. So I just wanted to say that and just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sirene Hudini, if I'm reading it right?
That is correct.
Wow, I caught one right. That's so rare. Followed by Lloyd Ainhern.
Yes, I am Sirene Hudini. I live and work in Malibu. I live on coastline, and I work at the Country Liquor. I am the manager. I also sell magic at the farmer's market on Sunday. My plug. Okay. The Country Liquor Store, I've been working there for a year. I was there after the move. And I've seen it, that mall, I don't know how it exists so well and how the people do so well, other than the fact that the Country Kitchen brings the business. They come into the liquor store waiting for their food. Yes, they park in front of the liquor store in their massive white trucks, blocking everything for 20 minutes. They go, get their food, they come into our store, they eat, they drink something, soda, and then they get in their truck and they eat it and leave. 20 minutes, tops. It doesn't bother Mike, the owner. But I'm here mainly to speak for myself and tell you how much I adore them. Not only do we get business from them, but in my opinion, when visitors come and ask for a place to eat, I tell them to go to the Country Kitchen, because in my opinion, it's the best damn burrito in town. And they also make a great chicken melt. But they are, they are, La Costa Mall is the oldest building. I remember heard a story that Mr. Webb moved the whole building to where it is now. So there you have it. Don't let them go. They're great. And, you know, we all have troubles parking there. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Lloyd?
Good evening, planning commissioners. I didn't think I was, you guys were going to know as much as you do know. I thought I was, I know, I've seen John over the years, and Jeff knows, was talking about it. There's a thing, the equilibrium that exists there with the amount of people that come in and out of that place is phenomenal, because we all know how tricky it is with that, especially with the post office. That is such a unique little place with that post office. How these guys feed people, get them in, get them out, nobody honks their horn, it's got a unique parking situation. All the rest of Malibu is as mellow as that area, and it's because of the Country Kitchen. And it's like Paul said, you know, I, you know, it's, it's something that we've all lived with all our lives, and we want to keep it. And there's one little confusion I have, and I would like to see it addressed. When I read the staff report, there was something about the restaurant, which is where the liquor store was, and they, when they bought, the new people bought it, they gutted that place, and it's just sitting there. And it says it has seating for 80 people. Well, you can't change the equal, I'm going to use the word, equilibrium of that place at all. The way it is right now is perfect, and it's because of the Country Kitchen. So I want to at least address why that was in the staff report, and just hope you keep it the way it is, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Lloyd. Is there anyone else here that would like to address the commission on this item? Okay, seeing nobody, I'm closing the public hearing. Oh, you didn't even make a motion there. Okay, would you like to rebut all the favorable reviews?
No, no, I don't want to, I, I don't want to rebut anything that you heard. I do want to answer Lloyd's question. The, the empty space next door was where the liquor store, Country Liquor, a lot of country going on in the center, used to be, and they moved down to the next center. The vacant space there is not slated for seating or anything to do with Country Liquor. It's vacant space right now. If something was to go in there, whatever it is in the future, and I assume something someday will, it's going to have to pass muster with the city to make sure that it is a use that is not an intensification use and is adequately parked. The CUP that is before you tonight is strictly for the Country Liquor as it is presently configured. So, Country Kitchen, excuse me, I mixed my metaphors there. It's all country. So with that, I just appreciate everybody spending the time to come out and testify in support of this. And again, gentlemen, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask.
Thank you, Don. Okay, with that, we close the public hearing, and we're back here for discussion or motion.
I move the staff's recommendation.
I second it. Can we, any discussion?
I'd say two quick questions.
Turn your mic.
Two quick questions. I've never had a problem parking there. There's, all of the parking that is on the road, right? I mean, on PCH, there's, there's a curb, and you can park on the inside of the curb or the outside of the curb. Is that included in the parking stuff here?
No, we just discussed the, the parking that's actually on the property, so that's, that's in the right of.
Okay. Second thing, I got, and I have heard from a lot of people, I got phone calls saying, don't move it. Couple of calls I got, people were concerned that if the CUP is approved, this place could get kicked out and somebody new could come in. And I guess that could happen.
I don't know how to speak to that. It was the property owner who applied for the CUP, and he, he has the right to do that. I don't know if there were any civil issues going on on the other side of this, but we were informed that the property owner just wanted to bring the restaurant into compliance, and that was the purpose for submitting the CUP.
Okay. Huh? Don?
Yes, sir.
What do you think? We've got all these people saying, we want to keep it there, let's keep it there.
Yeah, I agree, and so does my client, the landlord. He's been operating, Country Kitchen has been operating with a year to year lease until we got everything formalized with the, with the conditional use permit. And I have in my binder a three-year lease that has been given to the owner of Country Kitchen, who I understand is working out the details in regards to the signatories of the lease. So there's, there's no motivation or interest in, in Country Kitchen leaving. In fact, just from a purely capitalistic economic standpoint, I think that'd be about the dumbest thing that you could do. So, no, we're just, we're just crossing Ts and dotting Is.
Okay, back to where you were before we interrupted.
I got one more question, sorry, as well.
Please.
Just, oh, there was a comment that came in about, from another property owner there about parking, and I don't know who to address this to, but I understand there's currently a study of putting in paid parking areas. Do you know if this area would be one of those subject areas?
You're correct mentioning about a parking study. I'm not 100% certain on the areas. I believe this might actually be one of them because of the popularity, and also there is access to the beach in that area. But that is through the Public Works Department. It's a feasibility study. They're looking at a number of areas throughout the city. And then once they identify those areas, then they would actually come back with an application. That won't happen without actually a CDP in front of this commission.
I believe at a city council meeting a couple of meetings ago, they decided, they reviewed the parking, and it's in the area that's public, PCH, on the inside of the wall. I believe that they told staff to restrict the parking meters to the civic center area.
And I just want to add, too, from my personal observation over decades of going there, I agree with Steve. It's, it's almost odd how there's never, if you want to park right in front, yeah, it might be a little crowded, for sure. But there's the, the road going up Ramble Vista, which has no houses for hundreds of yards, or 200 yards at least. And then I think the, I remember like once I parked across Ramble Pacifico in the dirt, which I know other people do, but that's even rare. So for some reason, there's, who used the word equilibrium? There is some sort of, yeah, Lloyd, there is some sort of interesting equilibrium there. And that's just an observation, and I'm not sure why or how, but maybe just what I've noticed, too.
Everybody's happy.
Yeah, doesn't seem to be an issue from my experience.
Then, then for Mr. Clark, who submitted this letter, what advice would we give him if he wanted to push to get some type of meter parking there? Is that something you should pursue with city council, or how would that, would be his next best steps?
Yeah, you could pitch it to the city council for that. City council have to make any decision to restrict parking.
All right, thank you. Nothing else.
Discussion or motion?
We move second.
Oh, I second it? Okay. You know what? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you, guys. We are moving forward to item 5C, Coastal Development Permit Amendment Number 13-011, and variance number 13-038, and 17-049, an application to modify condition number 25 of Planning Commission Resolution Number 11-80, and the scope of work approved under Coastal Development Permit Number 09-044, to add a test water well and temporary retaining wall to expand the previously approved temporary dirt driveway at 4140 Encinal Canyon Road. Can we have a report, please?
Yes, good evening, Chair Pearson and members of the planning commission. The subject parcel is a vacant property approved seven years ago to construct a temporary driveway for geotechnical exploratory work. The parcel currently remains with the temporary driveway. The request before you is to amend the previously approved coastal development permit to modify a condition requiring the commencement of a future residence within seven years, otherwise requiring the site to be restored to its pre-existing conditions. The proposed amendment would grant the new owner three additional years in order to complete a separate coastal development permit application for a residence, go through the plan check process, and commence construction of that single-family residence. The amendment would also permit the construction of a test water well and associated improvements. For your reference, here is the grading plan that was previously approved by the planning commission seven years ago. And the applicant is proposing to make the driveway a few feet wider to give the, the drilling rig sufficient space to drill a test well. In doing so, a 12-foot tall retaining wall is needed along the northwest border of the The project requires two variances, one for a retaining wall in excess of six feet in height, but not to exceed 12 feet, and also for construction on slopes steeper than two and a half to one. Prior to the meeting, I had a conversation with Commissioner Uring. He was asking questions about the existing bond that was placed on the property for the restoration of the existing site. The, the commissioner correctly pointed out that the proposed improvements, and that means the additional road widening and the retaining wall, as well as the, the water well, are not, were not reflected in the price that was quoted for the restoration of the site. And after discussing this issue with the Public Works Department, they concur that the bond amount should be updated to reflect the proposed improvements. As a result, the applicant has been advised to provide an updated estimate construction cost that would include all these improvements, including abandoning the proposed test well and the additional grading and retaining wall. The, the bond amount would be adjusted to this new updated estimate, estimated construction cost, and this would be consistent with condition 43 of Planning Commission Resolution Number 11-80, which requires that the bond amount be acceptable to the Public Works Department and the city biologist to ensure the site is fully restored. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution number 18-13, approving the proposed project as condition. The new applicant is, is here, and we're both available to answer any of your questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Disclosures, please. Jeff?
Except I was probably on the commission when the original permit was granted.
I got lucky. Richard called me earlier this afternoon for questions. I told him I had a couple of questions on this project. Adrian graciously called me and spent a fair amount of time, give me some background, not to say changing, but just more information on how, how the project got to where it is. So nothing is going to impact, materially changes anything that's in the staff report. It was just more background information.
I visited the site with Chris Marks. We couldn't get in to look over the cliff. I remember, I believe I was on the planning commission at the time this was approved. If I wasn't, I went up and looked at it at the time, and I'm aquaphobic or whatever it is, I, I couldn't look over the edge. Other than that, I learned nothing that was not in the staff report.
As Commissioner Mazza mentioned, I did visit the property site. I'm, I think what I learned there was that it's the, kind of the scope of what the project would amount to. I kind of understand the road, but I really don't understand what a structure would work there. So that's one thing I didn't really see well addressed in the planning report, and I'd like to talk about that a bit if we can.
Okay, my disclosure is I, I actually just checked the site out on Google Earth, to be honest. And the other thing is I've, I've never heard Adrian described as gracious like that. I mean, not that he's not, I just never heard anyone say it. So it's total disclosure there. Questions of staff?
And Commissioner?
Yes.
Anything on Google Earth that you saw that was outside the staff report?
You can spin it around, it's like, stuff like that, and goes in close, and yeah.
Anything that would affect your decision or?
No, it gave, it gave me a general layout of the line. I know Encinal Canyon so well. I ride my bike up it all the time. I'm, I'm all over every bit of that. I grew up in that. That was my backyard, where I mainly grew up in Malibu, right on the beach there. So I, I, yeah, I get the terrain, I know the area, I know that property, not intimately, but I, yeah, so, yeah.
One additional disclosure I want to make, I also spun around Google Earth on that one, and when you come down to street view and look up, and they say that 12-foot retaining walls can't be seen from public access, unless they build a house across absolutely everything, you will see those retaining walls, judging by the perspective from Google Earth. So that was one thing I did take away.
Okay, questions? Jeff?
Yeah, this is not directly related to this application, but is this one of the properties on Encinal where the fire department is saying that they will not allow water wells for fire suppression?
Correct.
And so why are they drilling a test well?
The test well is to find out if there is sufficient water there, and if the water quality is, it's acceptable for portable use.
But how do you get firewater?
What?
Do you still have to have a fire department hydrant?
So without this, without this water well, we wouldn't know if there's sufficient water for the fire department to be able to fight fires, as well as the applicant wouldn't know if there's enough water on site to be able to sustain the proposed use. know if there's enough water on site to be able to sustain the proposed use.
Well, all right. My, my understanding was that the fire department would not grant permits in this area unless you hooked up to water main and they would not allow wells to be used as a, as a source of water for fire suppression, regardless of how big a tank you might have. Am I wrong in that? Or do you, I, I've just been hearing a lot about that whole section of Ensignal, which is caught in this, in this never, never land. And I was just wondering whether this was one of those or not. And, and maybe you can help me out on that. It's not directly related to this application, but?
Yes, you're referring to the neighborhood just to the south of this property. So there is a neighborhood that actually has the ability to upgrade some of the existing water tanks that will allow them the ability to have the fire flow required for meeting the fire department. This is not one of those properties. This property does not have the, there are no public water tanks that would be able to provide water to the site. And therefore, the fire department has provided a, a process for them that requires an appeal process. And through that appeal process, if it could be demonstrated that no improvements to existing water facilities would still not provide water service to the property, then they could actually provide their own water well and water tanks.
Can I ask you a question on that? Not having a good idea what the house is, since we didn't see it, is there space for a house and a 10,000 gallon tank on that flat pad?
And room to walk around it?
And yeah, I mean, it looks like it's pretty tight anyway.
It is. It's a very constrained property. And as you were, witnessed while you were there, it's, you know, it's very difficult to cite any future development there. The conceptual drawings do show water tanks to be placed basically buried into the berm area that's between the Ensignal Canyon Road and the proposed, or the driveway that's there now. And then they would use the driveway to access the house. And then the rest of the house would be constructed on the steep slope.
Can you bring up the, can you bring the edges to show where the water tank would be? I'm not seeing which.
So the, the tanks would be placed basically where the prop, where the statement property line is, that, yes, somewhere around there.
Do they, how, do we need to have the tanks figured out in this application as well or no? Just get the well drilled to see if they can support a tank?
At this, at this stage, they're just, again, looking to, they want to modify the condition to allow them additional time to come back with the residence. The residence also requires a coastal development permit and that will be before the planning commission, hopefully shortly. They only have three years to move forward with the application. Hopefully they can go through the plan check process and actually commence construction in those three years. So that's not a lot of time. So I, I believe we will see the application before the planning commission in the next few months.
Is there an existing approved house?
No.
Okay, now, I looked through the, the whole staff report as close as I could. And I could, this was started in 2009 and I couldn't find a single extension. How did that work? How did we go nine years without any extensions?
So the original application is good for three years. So they actually commence construction of that application as a, by actually constructing the temporary driveway that leads to the areas where they were doing some exploratory geotechnical work. So once they commence the development, that application is activated. And so, and so at this point, that application remains active. They were able to complete the phase two of the project within the last year or so. And now they want to come back with a water well as, as well as extend the life of that permit.
So you're not, it's not an extension of the permit. What it issue is that after seven years, they need to remove the road and repatriate, re?
I, I understand that. What I'm trying to figure out is, I, I thought the staff report said that the original project was not complete.
The original project?
The one that was approved in 2009? The grading?
The grading is complete on the site.
Okay. And that was signed off? It's filed?
There is no sign off because again, it's temporary until they follow it up with a house.
Okay, so now, as I understand it, it's temporary until 7/27, uh, let's see here, until September 6th of 2017. And six weeks before that, they put in this application. So in that six weeks, they were supposed to finish it and build a house. And that's, and, and that's like the fastest. Well, that's impossible. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so hasn't it expired?
I think, yeah, I think we might be looking at two things that are independent from each other. There is the three-year time period tied to a coastal development permit. And that three-year, if you commence development, then you're, you're activating your coastal development permit. So there is, you know, they activated their coastal development because they actually commenced development of their temporary driveway prior to those, the expiration of those three years. Now, there is a separate condition of approval for this project where we, the planning commission decided on a seven-year time period for them to come back with a house and actually start construction of the house. And that condition still remains. And so what they're proposing to do is modify that condition to give them an additional three years.
Okay, but that condition expired, right? They have passed 7/27?
The condition has expired, correct.
Okay, so doesn't that expire the permit?
No.
Why not?
It doesn't, the permit is already vested. What it, that means is that?
No, no, the grading permit was vested. I'm talking about the house.
For the, for the CDP, for the temporary road has vested. So that road can remain. But now it's past that date, that road can be removed and we could close on the bond to remove that road. Except they applied to amend to allow them to keep that temporary road for three more years. And so if you turn this down, then they need to remove it immediately or we could close on the bond to remove that road.
Okay, then, then for a while, my, my next question is, what I've got is, we usually don't do this if the municipal code is changed in the interim. And we now have the hillside ordinance. I don't think there's any question, this house is covered by the hillside ordinance. It's two and a half to one everywhere or whatever. And can, as Mikey said, can be seen from public viewpoints. So none of this has to do with a house. Where I read in here a 6,800 square foot house or something somewhere. What, how is that apropos?
Let me just make one point. So the hillside ordinance was adopted in 2007. So the application came in 2009 and was approved in 2011. So the hillside ordinance was already in place when the temporary road, that's essentially before you today, was last approved by the planning commission. The proposed house will be designed in conformance with that hillside standard.
So the, the house mentioned in here just doesn't exist? It's just?
The house mentioned in here is a, it's being processed as a separate application and will be before the planning commission shortly. And that, like I said, that house, they will have to demonstrate compliance with the hillside standards.
Okay, so that's, that will come to us. It's never come to the planning commission, any kind of house?
There was a conceptual design for a house when the temporary road was reviewed by the planning commission. Those, those plans were part of the staff report that were presented to the planning commission at the time. The planning commission never made a decision on the house because we needed to find out more information on the geology of the site. And so we knew that it was going to be a two-part process. And part one would be allowing them to do the exploratory work. And then part two would be for them to come back with a coastal development permit for a house that would, that would follow that application.
Now, last question until we have the hearing is, permits, planning, permit department permits typically expire after six months of no, no use. Well, this is nine years. They, they weren't working on it continually for nine years. Did it expire? Was there a period of over six months where it wasn't worked on?
So again, they, they actually did the grading in two phases. So the phase one, they did all the grading and they did request for the inspections. Now, there is no certification of the building side because it's only temporary and it's only allow, it's only meant to allow them to do the exploratory work. They did come back for the, for a new grading permit for phase two, and they did the grading for that recently. And, and so they did have active grading permits at the time the work was being done.
Okay, one quick question to Commissioner Euring's point. So number, condition 43 covers the change in the, in the bond cost issue, bond pricing issue?
Correct. So it's up to the public works department, city biologists to come up with that amount. They currently agree with Commissioner Euring. So it's a matter of updating the information and getting a new bond executed.
And that includes removal of the soldier piles and everything? And the, and the pads and all that stuff?
No, the soldier piles would remain. What it would include is the removal of the retaining wall so that the portion is exposed. And then it would include abandoning the existing water well where the proposed test well, as well as the additional 39 cubic yards of grading that they're proposing as part of this application.
Okay. Open the public hearing or?
I just, one more maybe for staff if I could, sorry. The, sorry about that. So the, just to kind of put this square in my head. So we started with saying, I want to build a house here. And so step one, which has been completed and was permitted and they got it all done in time, was kind of get the grading done, let's check the foundation out. And then now they did that, but they were subject to the seven-year rule. They got their paperwork in in July. So they beat that. They're asking now to extend that three years. Next step is to figure out, do we have water? Because right now the fire department will not let them build anything. So we're kind of just stepping through this. And this next phase is really, are we calling it phase two then to really figure out the water? Or is this now the phase three?
This is all part of phase one. So it's, it's basically, they're trying to figure out the feasibility of building on this property. So they need to figure that out first. And then phase two would be, you know, the CDP application for the house.
Thank you. Sorry, Steve.
Steve? Okay, I'm opening the public hearing. I have no slips. Does anyone want to address us on this? We have a volunteer. It's Mr. Norm Haney. Thank you, Norm. You're welcome.
Good evening, commissioners. I am familiar with the site and I am familiar with the fire department's standards with regard to water. I am a little confused sometimes when they deny people the right to use what is considered the minimum requirement, which is a 20,000 gallon supply for firefighting. They have approved that before. It's clearly the minimum requirement. Yet, when somebody makes an application where a water main is within 2,000 feet, however, the cost of getting that water main to the property or establishing the fire flow and the pressure, they require that even though that might cost $4 million to do. And they deny a person the minimum, which, which I believe is a violation of a person's constitutional right to a viable economic use of their land. When you find that extending the water main is three times as much as the property. With regard to this particular case, the testimony that you heard from Planner Fernandez is exactly right. The fire department will grant the 20,000 gallon availability for fighting fires if they can show that there's a, a source for water on the property. And the only way to do that is to put in a, a, a well. And I've done that on several other properties and verified that the flow from the well was sufficient to fill the 20,000 gallon tanks and gotten the approval from the fire department. They can't move forward without knowing that. And there's no guarantee. They're going to spend $45,000 putting in this well on a hope and a gosh and a by golly that there's actually going to be sufficient water down there to fill the tanks.
Norm, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Did, what you said about having to tap into the water, even if it's $4 million when you could do a well instead, does any of that, and then sometimes being denied, using a well instead of spending $4 million, does any of that factor in our decision here in any way?
You know, I don't think it probably does because I believe the fire department will approve the well as a source of water to fight fire, providing this gentleman gets the, gets the extension.
Thank you for your input. Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission on this? Okay, see no one. I closed the public hearing. We're back here for a discussion and a vote, or a motion, I mean.
Quick Adrian question. Is there a water main within 2,000 feet?
There is no water main within 2,000 feet.
Okay, I got a couple. Is, is the, you're the owner?
I'm the applicant.
Applicant? Come on up for a second. Just give me your name so we know?
Nick Barzakini.
Ah, okay.
Ah.
Your dad's the one that put it in back in 2009, right?
Correct. And now it just came back to me about a week ago.
Okay. This is a hinky project. I think that's a planning term. I don't, you know? You, you go back and I, I looked at the res, I, I started, that's why I called Adrian trying to get some background on this project. So I went back to the resolution that was signed off in 2011, all right? And condition seven there talked about the fact that they had, the C, that CDP that allowed the grading would be null and void if the project did not commence within two years after the permit was issued. This was in 2011?
Not, not seven?
No, this, 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 this was, it was, came up in 2009, eventually got in front of the planning commission in 2011. And that's the one that Jeff signed off on, all right? It, and it, it sounds like when I read that condition seven, that they didn't finish all the grading, that the permit expired. But apparently it never did, just kept going. So that, that was interesting. And then you get the current one that John brought up that sort of said they had to be in here by July or whatever it was, and they missed that date. So that, so here's the question, okay? You're going to drill the well. Now just, it's interesting too, because if you go back to the original application your father put in, the thing that they were trying to figure out when he put that in 2009 was where they were going to put the well.
Correct.
And you know why they delayed the project right now? Because they couldn't figure out where to, so it's been 15 years they've been working on where they should put the well, all right? I want a job like that. Like I said, that's a no pressure thing. I can handle that. But let me ask the question. If they, if they don't find water, this project's over?
That's my understanding.
Okay, so this is the last thing, all right? Got to do that.
So a little background, just really quick. I'm just getting into this again. But then there was a new owner in 2014 and he hired the architect, the current architect in 2016. So it had gone on with the previous owner from 2009 till 11 with my late father. He tried to work something out himself for a couple of years, then sold it. So really, it's been 2014 till now. The new owner has been working on the current issues. And the CDP application, I believe, was submitted, Adrian, was it July before the September deadline from the current architect?
Yeah, but the, the, the application says you had to have both the CDP in place and you had to begun construction.
Correct, yeah. And they did, yeah.
And I don't, I didn't see any house going up there. So that?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I just, I guess the only point was you got till 2020 now under this thing, right?
Sure.
And you've missed every, every, this project has missed every deadline that's been put in front of it. So, I don't think you want to miss another one.
That's your comment?
That's my comment.
Okay.
If you actually hustled instead of spending whatever decades it is, how long would it really take you to drill a well? Give or take six months?
So, yeah, drilling the, the well is, is not going to take long. It's, you know, the process of getting the permits from the LA County Department of Health. And that should be fairly quickly. I think maybe a month or so to get the permits. And then the drilling itself, you know, should, shouldn't take more than a month after that. So, I mean, we're looking at two months to, to do that. There is some testing and things like that that may take a little bit of time. But during this time, they do have a coastal development permit for a house. So there is no reason why they can't move forward with the house while they're trying to work this out. Now, now, the, the reason this is important is because a coastal development permit for a house does take more than six months to process. And so they need to be working on that and to demonstrate that the rest of the house is in compliance prior to bringing the application to the planning commission. They have to demonstrate that they have the water capability to, to, for the house to be on that property. And so we hope that at some point before we go to the planning commission, we'll have both the results of the water well as well as a complete application for a house. And then we can present those to, you know, the, the whole project to the planning commission.
Well, maybe I heard you wrong. You said they do have a, they do not have a coastal development permit. They have an application.
They have an application for a coastal development permit to, for a future resident, residents.
So that's, that's already designed and paid for?
Correct. The, the application was submitted in July. It's part of your staff report.
But we don't have any idea what it looks like.
Well, again, the, the application's incomplete and we, we're working through the incomplete project to finalize it. And then we're also waiting for the results of the water well. So we can have all the information before you so you can make a decision on that project.
And did you say before that the house is not on that pad? It's on the side of the cliff?
The conceptual drawings that were submitted with the application 2009 as well as the updated plans, they're very similar. The house is basically constructed just, you know, immediately south of where the temporary driveway was graded. And the temporary driveway would actually be the driveway access into the house and meet the final part requirements as well as to allow for the septic system, septic tank to be placed there. And then, again, the rest of the house would be on the slopes just to the south of that.
So the entire house is two and a half to one or greater?
The entire property is two and a half or greater. So the development would be on those slopes as well. Everything about the development would be on those slopes.
All right, well, I think we have a general idea of what's going on here. Do we have a motion on this?
Well, I have one last question. Adrian, if they were diligent, how long would it take them to commence building this house?
So that's one of the conversations I was having with Nick. And I had this conversation with the architects as well. The three-year timeline that we're giving them is extremely aggressive. So they need to continue to work on getting the application for the house and the, and the water well and everything in order to be able to make the three years. Because again, it's three years to not only bring the project back or bring the project to the planning commission for a decision. If approved, they will then have to go through plan check and then commence construction. And three years is a very compressed timeline.
So you're saying that they're, they already have an application in since last July?
Correct.
And they're going to start drilling the water well within two months? And it still takes three years to start construction? You know, why is, that's not normal in Malibu. Is there, three years it seems to be on the outside side of it instead of the inside side of it?
I was, I was saying, three years is actually extremely aggressive. So what's normal is actually a lot longer than three years.
Even though they've already started?
With their application, yes. A typical process for a house will take a couple of years to, you know, from submittal to the issuance of, of an approval. And then the plan check process usually takes several months after that. That's just, again, average. You know, plan check sometimes takes two, three years. And that's, you know, depending on how aggressive the applicants are and, and addressing the comments from the plan checkers.
Trevor, can we put a condition of no extension since this thing has been well over a decade already?
No, you can't constrain a future planning commission by eliminating their discretion to grant an extension.
I'll make a motion.
Can I, I, sorry, go ahead. Sorry, I got a few questions. Do we have a size of the proposed house, proposed house roughly?
I, I don't have that information in front of me. We do have the proposed size as part of the application for the house.
And you're saying just from what you?
I, I think it's, it's on that other, it's on the PDF. I have it set.
Do you have a?
It was on the, it was on the PDF that I was sent.
Yeah, is this like a 10,000 square foot thing hanging off?
I believe it's three to four.
Because they're in the hillside, they're required to reduce their maximum square footage by 25%. So the maximum square footage they could have on the property is about, I want to say, 7,000 square feet. So this is, I believe, about 1,500 square feet less than the maximum. So I believe it's somewhere around 6,000.
4, 4,800.
It's a good number, okay. So, so let's say we're looking, and just from what you described earlier, Adrian, the structure would be somewhere in here? You were saying you'd come down the driveway and this would be where it would sit roughly?
It's going to be a long house and it would follow the driveway. But yes, you're, you're pointing to the exact location. It's just a little bit longer to follow the topography that is currently there.
And so the, kind of half the house would be hanging over the ledge? They'd have pilings down or something into the slope below, I assume?
Correct.
Okay. And then?
We should be careful here that that application's not before us. It's just the extension of the road.
I have a reason for the question. So, so then when I look at these walls that are, the way they're, they're staggered six foot, then six foot? I mean, it just makes sense to me for how this property is going to lay out. Can, can they just make those, is it allowed to have just a 12-foot wall? I don't know what the rules are there because they're going to lose what little space they have to try to get around on this property, including fire. So I just wasn't sure why, is there a requirement to say staggered six-foot walls on this?
So, one, one thing to keep in mind is what you were pointing out are not walls. That's just the benching that they had to do for the temporary driveway. So as part of the original application, they weren't allowed to build any, any construction or any, excuse me, any retaining walls on the property. So it's all a cut and it's benched that way. So there is a bench that's about four feet wide and then there's another cut. And that's a lot, that's to allow the, you know, the, the enough room for their geotechnical exploratory work to take place. So the retaining wall they're proposing now is on the opposite side of where you were pointing. So it's on the north, yes. So that's the 12-foot retaining wall is actually located in that area. And that's to give them enough space to move around the truck in order to get the pipes down while they're doing the drilling for the water well. And it could be, you know, when the application comes back or I guess the new application for the house comes to the planning commission, the planning commission will have discretion at that time to allow for the retaining walls to all be a maximum of six feet or to allow these 12-foot retaining walls. We believe that a future residence, if constructed there, would block a lot of the, those retaining walls from view downslope.
Got it. And then also, just as I drove by, getting into this property is super tricky. His, like even getting equipment in there, is there any concern with safety or what have you? Or has that been addressed in terms of findings or what have you?
So it's, it's 20 feet wide. It's, it is definitely tricky to get in there. They actually demonstrated that they can get their, their drilling rig into the side. They actually provided some exhibits to show their turning radius and how they're going to actually get their vehicles there. So that was very important. That was actually one of the reasons why there was, you know, a few months delay on the project as well.
Okay, thank you.
Adrian, are we approving anything that's outside of the property line? It shows grading and blah, blah. And it looks like it's in Ensigno Canyon Road.
So, yes, there was some grading that had to take place in the right of way in order to take access to the site. So, as you know, there was, there was a very tall berm along Ensigno Canyon Road. It was up to 30 feet. And the area where they cut was the lowest part of that berm, which was at 20 feet. So they had to cut through that berm in order to then gain access to the other part of their driveway. So there was some grading that took place in the right of way.
But that's not part of the proposed grading tonight?
That is part of the grading that was previously approved by the planning commission and not part of this request.
And that got an encroachment permit from the county or whoever owns Ensigno?
It's the city.
City, okay.
Yes.
It's not a highway?
It's a, it's a county, it used to be a county highway, now it's a city highway, yes.
Motion? Did you turn your mic?
Second.
Say, turn your mic.
I move the staff recommendation. I'll second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Vice Chair Marx?
Yes.
Chair Pearson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, all in favor? Yay.